Hello, this is the March 16th, 2021 meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board. I'd like to call the meeting to order and those in attendance are Todd Richards, George Kingston, Jonathan Torsho, Pete Punderson, and myself, Russell Denver. We're currently joined by Rebecca Jones from the Office of Planning and Community Development. The first item, I need to ask if there is anyone else in the audience who might be viewing this meeting and is recording the meeting. Would you please raise your hand so you can be brought into the meeting and be recognized? Being Mr. Mackey, I don't know if we see anyone. I don't see anyone, so.
I, yeah, I don't see anybody recording. I see Lori Bryant and John Stuckenbrook, but I don't think they're recording.
All right, so therefore I would like to also announce that this meeting is being recorded by LCAT for future planning. We've now been joined by Bethany Yang, who is the Director of Planning and Community Development for the town. So it is my understanding, if we get into the agenda, first item would be the approval of the last meeting minutes. I hope everyone's had an opportunity to review that. So do I hear a motion to accept the meeting minutes of February 16th?
So moved.
In second.
So have been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. So by roll call, Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsho?
Aye.
And I am a yes as well. So for the people in the viewing audience, we've received a request by fuels to withdraw their items for this evening's meeting without prejudice. So I was asked if Mr. Richards, or see if there's a motion by a board to move this item out of order, so move item four to number one.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion was made and seconded to move this item out of order, so by roll call, Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Mr. Torsho?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. So would you call that item, Mr. Richards?
Yes, case SP 2021-2, 13-25 North Main Street. Request by applicant for a special permit for redevelopment of the existing gas station and convenience store and proposed drive-up ATM at 13-25 North Main Street. Assessors parcel ID 27-38-0, 27-37-0, 27-36A, and 27-26-148A on a 63,690 plus or minus square foot lot located in the business zoning district. The applicant is Pride Stores LLC, 246 Cottage Street, Springfield, Mass., 01104.
So as I indicated, we received a letter from the petitioner's representative asking that the item be withdrawn without prejudice, which means that it can be brought back at a meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the withdrawal from my agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So a motion made and seconded to allow the petitioner to withdraw without prejudice to this item. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call. Mr. Torsho?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So the next item, Mr. Richards.
Case site 2021-1, 431 North Main Street. Request by applicant for site plan review for installation of two pickup locker units with 30 lockers each at 431 North Main Street. Assessors parcel ID 13-22-0 on an 8.44 plus or minus acre site by an existing structure located in the business zoning district. Applicant is Big Y Foods Incorporated, PO Box 7840. Applicant representative is Lori Bryant, 2145 Roosevelt Avenue, Springfield, Mass., 01102.
So I see this is Ms. Bryant. It's just unmuted herself, but we can't see you.
Do you have video, Lori?
I do, yes.
Can we put it on, please?
Sure. Hang on just a second. Is it not, it's not accessing my camera for some reason?
Do you have your, on your camera settings? If you go down in the lower left, where your camera, there's a little camera icon there.
Yeah, I've got it. It's, it's start video, so hang on. I'm giving it access, it just won't allow it. Sorry about that.
Well, so while you might continue to work on that, so thank you for forwarding the materials to the board. So why don't you give an explanation of what you have in mind, and where, more importantly, where at the premises would they be located?
So if you're facing the front of our store, or main entrance to the left, I did send over a floor plan, which you should have in your, your hands that shows exactly where.
Well, there, there might be people who are viewing this meeting and did not have that material, so I'm asking you to describe.
Okay, so if you want, if you're facing the front of our building and you're looking at our very front entrance, just to the left of the, the entrance will be our locker setup.
So where will all of those carts go?
So they're, it's a three-foot deep by 15-foot long metal with slide door locker setup, and inside of it will be small totes. What will happen is the customer will go online, they'll order their groceries online, they will be picked out of our Chickaby, Mass. warehouse, they will be put into a truck, trucked over to the East Long Meadow Big Y, they will be put into these lockers and locked, and then when the cus, at the customer's request for this location, when the customer arrives, they will pull into a designated parking slot, they will call the number on the sign for that parking slot, someone from inside the store will go out to that locker, they'll retrieve their groceries and bring them to their, their car, similar to what Home Depot does.
Okay, so my, my question is currently, I think, at that location, in that space, there are shopping carts?
No, there are not. That's an empty space.
Okay, so let me kind of go back. So I went into the Big Y, and the main, the main entrance going in, I got a shopping cart immediately to the left.
Now, do, you didn't get access to the information I sent over?
So I'm trying to explain this to the people who might be watching this in line.
Oh, okay, so I don't know how I could share that information if I could bring up a picture of what we have.
I can set her up for screen sharing.
Okay.
Let me see if, yep, I'd have to access it.
That would be good, because I can't find the material. I don't think I got it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm missing some material too, by the way.
Rebecca, do you have all of that information that I had sent over to you?
Someone's mic, I think, is on, it should be shut off.
Yeah.
Rebecca's is off.
But still, I think either you or John has an echo too.
So one thing that I've, I've seen that might be good is everyone could mute themselves and then come back.
Right. If you, if you push your spacebar, then you can talk when you need to talk.
So is the echo there? So Lori, can you come back on, please?
Okay, can you hear me? I was just searching, yes, sorry, I don't know, it wasn't me, but I'm, I'm trying to search through what I sent to Rebecca.
So I, so I think most people in East Long Meadow have been to the Big Y.
Yes.
Most people have gone in the main entrance.
Yep.
Immediately to the left of the main entrance.
Mm-hmm.
All the shopping carts are there. And then you have the exit to the building. So where are the lockers going to go?
Yes, so if you could just give me one minute, I'm going to try to pull up that print that I sent over to Rebecca, just so I can make sure that I'm describing what we're doing there. I was hoping that you would have access to that and be able to show the viewers.
Well.
Otherwise, I would have been prepared, that's what I thought was going to happen, otherwise I would have been, had this access immediately.
Russ, may I just ask a question?
Yes.
Are the lockers going to go to the left of the exit door? Lori?
Yes.
They're going to go to the left of the exit door from the Big Y?
Correct.
Okay, so in between the exit door and the entrance door where the, where the shopping carts are and have always been, that's going to be left as is?
Yes.
Okay. That answer your question, Russ, finally?
I, I didn't know if I wasn't asking it correctly, but I.
Well, I, I, yeah, you may have, I'm, I'm sorry, my apologies.
So are there questions from the board for Lori Bryant?
Not that, not for me, after getting that straightened out, I could picture it and, and see what's going on and, and can appreciate their effort.
Yep.
Just quick question, you're not going to be changing the traffic flow at all, but there'll be existing parking spaces that are just designated the way they are over Stop and Shop?
Exact, at Big Y, yes, correct.
Okay, I would say that's currently designated at Stop and Shop. They, they use existing parking places.
For the same.
That's what you're doing.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware that they have a similar setup. I did go through their parking lot, but they may have designated parking spots for pickups.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the petitioner?
Yeah, I do. Lori, does, are you going to use an existing parking space? You're not going to add any more to the, the equation over there?
That is correct. We're using four existing parking spaces, and we're going to put portable signs.
Okay.
At each of those with the phone number for the customer to call.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. There are no other questions to the motion to approve?
Motion made.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, so Todd and George are both muted, as well as John. So by roll call, so a motion to approve this request. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Torsho?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Best of luck to you, Lori, thank you.
Thank you, sorry for the confusion. Have a great evening.
Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Okay, case 2021-2, 90 Denzilow Road. Request for site plan review for the installation of five solar carports at 90 Denzilow Road. Assessors parcel ID 10-15-1 on a 17.54 plus or minus acre site in the industrial garden zoning district. The applicant is John Mayberry, 9 Denzilow Road, East Long Meadow, Mass.
So I'm going to ask Bethany, Bethany, can you remind us, at our last meeting, which John appeared on, we, we granted an approval of a site plan waiver, and the request was that John make changes to the site plan and come back to the planning board. Correct?
Yes, just upon a full site plan review application.
Okay, all right. So I see Mr. Mayberry, John, welcome. You're muted, John. You're muted. There you go.
Thank you.
Welcome. I see you, I see Michael Smith with you. So Michael, if you, if you want to unmute, that would be wonderful. So Bethany, is there anything you want to add before we get started?
We did have some comments from DPW of some remaining items that they'd like to see on the, on the site plan, construction details, along with some erosion controls.
Would you like me to read those into the record?
Please.
The DPW has reviewed the site plan submitted for 90 Denzilow Road and offers the following comments: "The site plan should be revised to comply with the requirements of the Town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaw, section 7.4, Site Plan Review. The drainage calculations should be revised to comply with the Town of East Long Meadow rules and regulations for management of storm water. Please let me know if you have any questions, information, and Tom Christensen."
John, welcome. So I'm, I want to go from here.
Yeah, I certainly can, so I've, I've tried to follow the bouncing ball, if you will, all the way along with submitting the required information. I believe the stormwater and the calculations were forwarded to Bethany, Rebecca, as well from Robert Cafarelli, which I believe is the stormwater information that they're looking for. If, if they're look, looking for stormwater management to go into the town stormwater system, I, I don't know if you remember, but nothing is leaving the actual parcel area that we're working. There's two retention-detention basins that, that maintain everything, so all I need is a little more help as to exactly what, what's required. We did, Michael Smith, I did, did have him redo the parcel and include all of the utilities, the structures, the dimensions, the information that I understood Tom Christensen wanted, so I've been attempting to follow all of the requirements to, to get this, you know, so that you guys are actively informed of what it is.
Anybody have a question for, for John or for Mike?
For John, good evening, how you doing?
Good.
I read it, I read an awful length of report with a seal, an engineering stamp seal on it, for approving all this stuff, didn't I, today? I, I, the information that was forwarded, it's about eight pages long?
Or more, yeah. It was, I think the confusion was on my original, I sent in like page one, two, and three, or page one and two, which was the summary of, I believe, 43 pages.
Yeah.
When, when Tom got just the one or two pages, he goes, "That isn't going to cut it." So in my conversation with him, he says, "You got to have more than that." So I then forwarded the whole document, which, yeah, has things I can't understand on it.
Well, and seeing the, the seal and the approval, me, and from my corner over here, I'm, I'm all set.
You're not increasing the impervious at all, you're putting this over parking places that are there, right? Yeah, so I don't see any issues.
Any, any other member have a question for the petitioner?
I, I need to clarify that, just so, no, there, it is more parking lot that was reflected on the site plan documents and such. All of the impervious, if I'm saying it right, the asphalt area.
Yeah.
Is going into two controlled basins that were designed between Mike Mako and Robert Cafarelli, none of them to go into any wetlands areas or any other places of the sort, they're going right into their own area. And if you're familiar with that, that land over there is pure sand. You can make children's sandboxes out of the sand that's under there, so it's not your typical redstone clay or anything. That thing drains like straight down.
I'm fully aware of that. I think the, the issue is just to verify, to state that the additional, the current stormwater system can handle the additional impervious, and that's really what I think Tom was looking for. Okay, statement to that, that effect. And I think that's what we've got.
Yeah.
I'm very familiar with the soils there, yeah, they're going to drain like crazy.
Any other questions? Any other comments, John? Mike, anything? Do I hear a motion to approve this item?
Point of order to public hearing?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Kingston. So I'd like to open this to the public. Anyone have any comments they'd like to add to this matter? Thank you, George. Hearing none, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
You have Tom Christensen.
What's that?
Tom, where's you? Sorry for the delay. The names, the names bounce around on the list as I'm trying to bring people in.
Mr. Christensen, how are you tonight?
Good evening.
What would you like to add?
I just want, just wanted to say that the, the stormwater issue was resolved, they sent over revised calculations, as well as the stormwater checklist, and that all seems to be in order. I spoke to Mr. Mayberry's contractor this afternoon at length. There was additional comments that I had made yesterday in a letter to, to Bethany about just adding some, just standard construction details to the plan, and since the last semittal, there was a water and sewer services added to, which I understood was to, just in case they were to be used in the future, that obviously they wouldn't have to rip up the parking lot, which was, you know. But we're still working through some of the logistics of the elevations of the proposed sewer and those connections to the town system through an easement from Denzilow Road.
Tom, any questions for Tom?
So what does that mean with regards to approving it, Tom?
My, my contention was that there's usually a little more detail on a site plan than what's submitted, and that's what I was asking for, was just construction details, erosion control measures, the drainage was taken care of, like I said, and then we're going to have to, we'll have to meet with, I, I told the Mr. Mayberry's contractor that we could meet on-site to discuss the, the new utility connections that are being proposed with this semittal.
Tom, would you have any objection to our approving this subject to then meeting your requirements on this?
Not at all.
Okay, good.
John, do you want to add something?
Yeah, my, my only comment would be, we'll do whatever, you know, Mr. Christensen wants or anybody wants, and these utilities, they may never be used, but putting down that much expensive asphalt and then maybe needing to run some pipes through the parking lot at some future date, and then getting, coming back for full approval and permitting by any authority at that time, which who knows what those requirements might be, but I'm taking a risk that it's smart to not rip up the asphalt later, and it's some money invested underneath that maybe it will be used and maybe it won't. So, Tom, we'll work with you, and, you know, Mr. Wilson and anybody else involved, I mean, Mr. Smith, everybody's been very cooperative to help me get as much as I could get for you guys, you know, and continue with the project, so I'll do what it takes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
At this point, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion was made to close the public hearing by roll call, Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torsho?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well for that matter. Any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Oh, we have to, we have to have those conditions in there. Right, George?
Yeah, make it a motion to approve, subject to meeting your requirements of Department of Public Works.
Yeah, yeah. That just has to be in there, so that, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made with the conditions. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, by roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsho?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you, John, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
My last comment would be, thank you to everybody, and I have to continue to say, Bethany and Rebecca have been wonderful to work with, so you've got great staff there, so thank you very much, appreciate your attention.
Good night, John.
Take care. Next item of business?
Okay, case SP 2021-1, Beretta Inc., DBA Tortillo Mexican Restaurant. Request by applicant for special permit for restaurant at 621 North Main Street. Assessors parcel ID 1A-54-85, a 0.54 plus or minus acre site in existing structure located in the business zoning district. The applicant is Beretta Inc., DBA Tortillo Mexican Restaurant, 3590 Hymn Road, Grafton, Mass., 01519.
Gentlemen, welcome back. Before I, I hear from you, so Bethany, my understanding that there was a discussion at the last town council meeting about this restaurant, could you just shed some light for the board?
Sure, so there was a discussion, the council last week, they made a motion, if you want, I'll just read it into the record. Councilor Henry made a motion that the town council instruct the planning board to consider the application for special permit by her of the existing agreement with GMRC remaining force. Councilor Richards, I can get the motion, roll call, and it was unanimous, move that forward. So essentially, they are keeping the agreement in place in case they need to call back a minute in the future with the property owner, but they do not want that to inhibit this special permit agreement viewed by the planning board.
Thank you for that clarification. Gentlemen, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
George?
Jeff Oppenheim, representing Barrera Inc., I'm an attorney in Falmouth, Massachusetts. Greetings from Cape Cod. As you recall, we were, we came before you last November. I just would like to quickly go over who the, the principals are in Barrera Inc. and give you some background before we dive into the actual plan. The president of our corporation is Miguel Ramos, and his brother Jorge is our treasurer. They're both directors. We have two newer members to our corporation as a result of the pandemic, and that's father and son, Ramon, Michelle Senior and Junior. Also assisting with, on this project has been Phil Aburdi, who is an architect out of Springfield, Mass., and I think he's also, we may want to call him up at some point. We may need to hear from him.
Mr. Mackey, can you bring Mr. Burdick in? Go ahead.
Okay. Dan Kelly represents the, the property owners who are going to be our landlords, the Coellos, and Brendan Greeley has been the commercial real estate broker who has been the broker on this project. So those are all the players. The background of this is that we, last year, got a liquor license approved pending the approval of the planning board, and then we had the pandemic, lost a few of our investors, and the two, the father-son team of Ramon and Michelle decided to join and invest in this corporation. So we came back to you in November, and as you. So we came back to you in November and as you recall, the stumbling block was the agreement that you just heard. The town council has given you the green light to proceed. So we're dealing with four individuals who collectively have 81 years of experience in the restaurant business. So it's, it's a very experienced group. The Jorge and Miguel Ramos own 13 restaurants. The Michelle family owns two restaurants in Rhode Island. But Mr. Michelle Senior had multiple restaurants in Indiana, which he sold before coming to Rhode Island. So this is a very experienced group. There was no problems before the town council securing a liquor license. So I hope that we can proceed this evening and get a special permit. Now for the, for the details. So the restaurant is a 9,995 square foot building. It, it has seating capacity for 261 people, which is slightly less than our, during our last presentation. We, we decreased the seating capacity by three. We have 88 parking spaces. We have 5,656 square feet on our main floor and 4,339 square feet in the lower banquet area. We have a second floor, which has a small office and a small apartment. The first floor is approved for 174 occupants and the lower level 87. The first floor will have a bar seating 22 people. We're eliminating one of the existing first floor bars. And the basement bar will have seating for nine patrons. The building has two public entrances and five exits. The entire, the interior will be renovated. There'll be colorful Mexican colors, typical of my, of our clients' restaurants. I'd like to just quickly go over the site plan, which I assume you have copies of. We've made some changes based on comments made by the board last November. Specifically, we've added two additional handicap parking spaces near the front entrance. They're to the right of the building as you face the building with your back to on, on North Main Street. We have added five trees in the front yard, again, based on comments made by the board in November. We've also added a series of five Arbor Vitae screening the decks. This again was a suggestion made by the board in November to screen the activity on the decks from the road. I'm sure it has not escaped you that this application is not to serve food or alcohol on the decks. We have taken that out of our original application. We did that hopefully to make this less controversial, frankly, and to get an approval. The decks will not have seating. They will just have people who want to smoke can go to the deck areas, but we're not providing seating out there. We're really not promoting smoking. We're promoting the, the Mexican cuisine and the alcohol that one can buy in, in my client's restaurant. The decks do have an addition, which is an emergency egress to the parking area, which you'll see located, you know, sort of in the middle of the two decks. We have also, at the suggestion of the board, added a parking space dedicated to the second floor apartment residence. And that's located halfway back on the right-hand side of the building. And it's near a staircase that leads to the second floor. So those are changes that we've made after hearing concerns by the board a few months ago. The floor plan, which is a, shows all the seating inside. Again, as I detailed, 174 seats on the ground floor and I think it was 87 in the basement, but it's on the plan. And the only other change in the exterior is where there was a small bar area. We're taking the bar away and we're adding a, a wall to hide some of the activity in the kitchen and dish, dish room area. But otherwise, it's not, you know, there's not going to be any substantial structural changes in, in the inside. As a matter of fact, the wall that they're putting up is really not considered structural. So that is about all on the floor plan. So on our special permit request, we, I just discussed the minor modifications to the interior. The changes do not affect the seating capacity, which will ma, which will remain the same. I discussed the Arbor Vitae, which is not designed to screen the decks from Granby Street. As you're probably aware from my application, the structure is a pre-existing, non-conforming. And again, the only exterior change that we're proposing is the staircase from the decks to the, to the parking area. And this change is not, doesn't make the structure more non-conforming.
This was, hold on, this was on the advice of the building. We reviewed this with the building inspector and asked him specifically about whether stairs were required there. And he suggested that we do provide the stairs. And based on the space available, we actually cut them into the, into the deck. So the deck is slightly reduced in size.
Thank you, Phil. So there's a long history of special permits being granted by this board for this property. And they go back at least to 1989. That's as far back as my research has gone. The most recent one you issued was in 2018, which was the one that concerned smoking on the two decks. I believe that we meet the criteria of, under your special permit criteria. And that is specifically, is this, is the specific site an appropriate location for the use, structure or condition? Again, we have a very long history of this site being used as a restaurant in your community. The second criteria is the use as developed. Will it adversely affect the neighborhood? My, my position on that is no, it will not. It has been there for a long time. We are going to be running a family restaurant. The latest that we'll be closing is midnight on Friday and Saturday. I believe the prior license allowed the owners to, to close as late as two in the morning. So we don't believe that there's going to be any disturbance to the neighborhood. Again, because of the clientele, we attract a lot of, a lot of families, you know, sports-related banquets and, and family dinners, et cetera. Will, will there be a nuisance such as noise or safety hazard created? I don't believe so. We're only going to be using the decks for smoking. All the other activities will be within the building. Adequate, appropriate facilities will be provided for proper operation of the proposed use. Absolutely. We're, we're going to make minor changes inside, as I discussed. Some changes that were suggested to the exterior by the board will be done. And, you know, a couple of walls to screen the kitchen and dish area. The next criteria is appropriate screening by walls, fences, planting, planting or other devices shall be provided for the parking area. So the parking area is historically as it has been. It's, was designed, I guess, to, to meet the parking requirements for the interior. We are providing screening to Granby Street from the decks, again, at your suggestion, and plantings in the front yard. There's not a whole lot of area on this site where you can plant anything that would survive. You can see that from your, from the site plan that we've provided. The only, the, the, the next criteria, exterior features or appearances will not be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. So again, we're, the only exterior change is the staircase that our architect mentioned. The building commissioner or the building department wanted to see from the decks. So we're adding that. Number and design of access drives and traffic features will be adequate for the intended use. So again, we're not really changing the parking lot. We're adding a handicap, a couple of handicaps spots and putting some screening on the deck. But there's not, there's no dramatic changes to the parking lot. I think we're quite limited in what we can do. The last criteria is the use must be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of your zoning bylaw. So again, you have issued several as a board, several special permits historically. So I think historically, the town has felt that the site is appropriate for its use. We're not, we're, we're continuing to use the site as a restaurant, not a nightclub, but as a restaurant and banquet facility in, in the basement. I, I think that use has been well established. And I think the community as a whole will be pleased with my client's operation. They're, again, very experienced at doing this. Between them, they have 15 restaurants. And all the way from Wapinjar Falls to Saugus, Massachusetts. So you won't be disappointed there.
Okay, thank you very much. Wonderful presentation. I'm going to open it to the board, but before I do, I just want to give three thank yous. One, for resolving the issue with the town council. Two, for listening to the comments of the planning board and incorporating them into your new plan. And three, for reaching out to the building department, getting their comments on this issue. So with that said, and before I open it, I open the public. Anybody from the board have a question?
I have a question from the other board members. The application is for assessors carso 1A-54-85. And when I look at that parcel, there's about not, less than 40 parking spaces on it. In order to get to the 88 parking spaces that the applicant's attorney pointed out, you would have to include parcel 1A-56, 1A-57, 1A-58. And even there, I don't count 88 spaces, but just assuming that there were. Shouldn't those parcels be included in this application?
Bethany?
While you're saying that, Rebecca, the plans were not included in the material on, on the drive. I, I see the application for this, but I don't see the plan.
Yeah, I had the same question and had reached out to Attorney Oppenheim's office staff and confirmed that what we had was what they had previously submitted. So all that I've received is available to you.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm working off of the text map because I don't have plans, which is what brought to light that it looks like there's three other parcels that should be included in this application.
So the plan that you should have, which is the plan that I sent, is, was revised on February 10, 2021.
I do not have that plan.
Who said that?
George.
Neither. Okay.
I'm looking at Google Drive where all the material is supposed to be, and I do not see that under your file.
But regardless of the plan, if you do look at the text map, you'll see that the 88 parking spaces would have to include those other three parcels. But my question would be, shouldn't those three parcels be included in this application?
Yes, they should be. And if that was an oversight on my part, I apologize. I can tell you that our landlord controls all of those parcels. They all, he owns, or they, or the corporation owns all of those parcels where we're showing the parking. So it's not, you know, we're, we're on land that we have a lease to park on. Right. So where the, where the problem comes in is it looks like those parking spaces are being used for two different buildings. And so that's why I think those three parcels need to be included in the application.
I agree.
I have a question, Russ. In previous approvals, were those parcels included in each of the previous approvals that we gave to Manny and so forth? If they weren't, then it was an assumed item, which probably isn't correct. But it's always, it's, it's a known fact that the, the parking plan requires all those parking spaces. And did we before, on other applicants' application, have those included or not? That's my question, which it just probably takes some research, but.
Regardless, they should be included.
Yeah.
And we have no problem including them because they're part of our lease.
Yeah, that's good. And I also think you did a wonderful job on your, on your revisions. And I thank you very much for your effort.
Thank you.
Other, other questions before we open to the public?
I just like to add, I'm happy with the revised plans, that they're not going to be decked for eating and drinking. And I'm thankful that they listened to us and I, it sounds like a really good use of the building.
Jonathan?
Yeah, I, I appreciate just echoing. I appreciate that as well. I had the opportunity to attend the council meeting. So it's very thorough, very detailed. And it's always good to have somebody, you know, come into the community, open up a business that has a lot of experience already with a number of other restaurants. So I appreciate.
So this is a public hearing, so I would like to open the public hearing. Though if there is someone out there who wishes to be heard on this matter, would you please hit the raise hand button on your screen so you can be recognized and brought into the meeting?
So I just have Mr. Page first?
All right, Councilor Page. Counselor?
Good evening. Couple items to note. I would think a updated parking plan would be required, which would easily show all of those spaces. I believe in the lease agreement, if I remember from the material I received, the lease agreement included the parking spaces that you were leasing them. And that was information that the town council had received. So we knew that the parking spaces were there, but I believe the- uh, zoning bylaw requires like every 10 years for your parking plan to be updated. So that may be a simple way to, to take care of that.
So can I interrupt you for a minute, Counselor? So, um, the, maybe Mr. Oppenheimer can answer the question. So the plan that was submitted by the town council, was that a updated parking plan?
No, I believe so. We're, we're, uh, I guess I'm a little bit, um, surprised. And, and I apologize if the board did not receive the most current plan. Because that's the plan that, you know, we've been working with. And, um, uh,
It was handed over to the town hall.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a copy.
So go ahead.
The updates on the plan are, as, as the attorney mentioned, um, we've now added two more handicap spaces. We've, we've designated one existing space as a space designated for the residential area.
And.
Yes. So I did notice that they had the lease on it. The only thing I would suggest is, um, I talked to the building inspector, and he said he's had an issue with the apartment up above being able to get in to inspect it. And that if it was included, um, in the special permit, just noted that there was an apartment. He knows it's legal and all, but at least if we note that there's one up there, it'll be a lot easier going forwards for him. I was very, very thrilled with the restaurant. I liked everything about it and I'm extremely happy, and that's why they sailed right through with the town council.
In attorney Oppenheim's, um, presentation, he did state that on the second floor, there was a, a small apartment and an existing office. So that's already been brought forward.
And it, and it is actually on the plan.
Right.
That apparently you don't have, but it, but I assure you, it's on the, it's on the plan.
When we get, when we get a building permit, we will be required to have all the spaces inspected before we receive a certificate of occupancy. So it will be inspected.
And it has a separate egress. From the second floor to the parking level, which is adjacent to the spot that has been designated by Mr. Burdick for the, for the residents. So it's on the right-hand side of the building.
So if you could hold your question, Mr. Richards, for please, while we listen to the remainder of the public who might have additional comments. Are you done, Mr. Page?
I am done. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, Ralph. See you, Ralph. Good to see you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to be heard on this matter?
There is. There's another gentleman coming in.
So I took a name, Rolando. Your microphone is muted and we can't see. I cannot wait until we can have physical meetings again.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Yes.
Okay.
Would you please let us know who you are?
Rolando Curtis, twenty-three Vandijk Road, East Long Meadow. I'm the house behind Pride.
Thank you.
My question is, uh, the days of operation that was not stated in the presentation. I do appreciate that the deck is not going to be used for dining and marachi ban, as was proposed once before, for smoking only, which is an ideal situation. The parking area does present a little bit of a problem. And I'm sure you, the planning board, will get this sorted out. But, uh, my main, main question was the days of operation and, and it's not going to be open till two o'clock in the morning, which is great. Those are my only options.
So, Mr. Oppenheim, the days of operation?
The restaurant, uh, is, um, open seven days a week. Sunday through Thursday, eleven AM to ten PM. Friday and Saturday from eleven AM to twelve PM.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Pardon?
Anything else you'd like to add?
No, that, that was, those were my questions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to be heard on this matter?
I see no hands.
Okay. So there are no other individuals wishing to be heard on this matter. So I would like a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none by roll call.
Who?
Who?
Mr. Kingston to close the public hearing. Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torscha?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we close the public hearing. So, um, before I ask for a motion, any board member, Mr. Richards, I know I, I cut you off for a question. Do you wish to ask something?
Yeah, um, so what do we do about the fact that, um, the application should have included those other three parcels? And what the reason why that means something is because as an example, and there may be other things to be considered, but as an example, there's an apartment that's using some parking spaces there with a small office. Are those same parking spaces being counted twice? And what other users are in those buildings that are utilizing the same parking spaces that would not be available for the restaurant customers? That's why I, I suggested it should be one application for all four parcels, you know, which includes the three parcels that are missing.
So, Mr. Oppenheim, can you address the question? Which I, I.
I think I can.
But the.
So, uh, thank you, Mr. Richards, for that question. So the existing house, um, that's on the Barnum Street side of the property has, uh, two parking spaces which are not counted towards our eighty-eight required parking spaces. You, if you had the plan, you'd see that they are not numbered. So we take care of, of that building with those two parking spaces. We've added, as I've said, uh, we've added a designated spot for the, um, apartment on the second floor, which, uh, reduced our capacities from two hundred and sixty-four patrons to two hundred and sixty-one.
Just, just to be clear, when you say so that we've added.
Mr. Burdick, Mr. Burdick, Mr. Burdick, through the chair.
Oh, excuse me.
Okay, go ahead.
Just to be clear, when he says that we've added the, the spot, we've taken one spot and designated it as a spot for the residence, which is what was required by zoning in one spot for, for residents. And then we've reduced the seating, which, um, is required to have three, one spot for every three seats. So we've reduced the seating by three seats. So it is, it's an existing spot that's there now. We just picked one that was closest to the, one of the access points to the residential space. The office space, which is a, it's one room and it's like fifteen by twelve, something like that. And that's going to be used in conjunction with the restaurant. That's my understanding. It's not a separate like rental space or anything like that. And as, as attorney Oppenheimer mentioned, the other, other budding piece, you know, building there that faces Barnum Street is, is isolated from this parking. So this parking has, from what I can see from the site plan, has historically been used for the specific use that, you know, was being proposed now. That's the eighty, the eighty-eight spaces, really eighty-seven plus one now, which was just designated residential space.
So, uh, I guess I would ask the question that, Mr. Oppenheim, how would the petitioner feel about a condition that the office space be solely used for the operation of the business?
That would be acceptable.
So, uh, Bethany, we might, might need a little help here. So, George, um, with your procedural knowledge, can we amend the, uh, application to include the parcels that are not currently?
I, I would consider that to be a, a technical or clerical issue. That we could approve it subject to two conditions. One be that the office be used only for the business. And secondly, that the application be, um, corrected to include the additional parcels.
And also, and also to state that the, um, existing small space up above be used by the restaurant.
Which spa, you talking about the apartment?
On the second floor.
Yeah, yeah, we did mention that. Yeah.
That should be included in, in an amendment to the special permit.
As a condition.
Okay. So I will move, move to approve subject to those three conditions.
And I'll, I'll second that.
So I just want to verify. So the conditions are that the current office space on the second floor be used solely in conjunction for the running of the restaurant.
Yep.
The second one, that the, that the plan or the, the application, it's for the, I believe it's a total of four parcels?
Mm-hmm.
In question?
Okay. They'd be corrected to include all four parcels.
Okay. And the third was?
I, I don't know what Pete's third one was. I thought it was referred to the apartment. Or did that refer to the office, Pete?
The third, I believe, is reference to the apartment. The fact that it exists, so it's easy to respect for the.
But I think, yeah, but it's on the plan.
Yeah. Pete, could you clarify your concerns? Pete?
Peter, my concern, all I said was, I just wanted to be a condition that the, uh, the space on the second floor, it would not be a rental space. It would just be office space that you guys use in a restaurant. That's fine.
That was the first condition we had, so it's only two conditions. Okay.
I'm, I'm fine with the rest of it.
Okay. So I would like to just raise one quick issue. So Counselor Page mentioned a updated parking plan?
He has one.
He has one.
Yeah.
Okay. So then there's the motion made, um, to approve the special permit with the condition. So it's been made and it's been seconded. Any discussion before?
Was it seconded? Yes, okay.
Yes. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call. Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torscha?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, but, uh, congratulations. But we do, I do have a couple of questions. So the first being, how soon?
Well, you know, my clients are, are raring to go. I mean, you know, as soon as we get the liquor license approved at the state level, you know, we're, we're going to want to open as quickly as possible. They're going to start the renovation, uh, soon. Uh, I don't know how, whether there is a process within the town of East Long Meadow to allow an applicant to start to do interior work, uh, before the appeal period is run. I, I don't know whether that's something that, um, the town would allow. But, you know, that's how anxious we are to get started. Just one, 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 uh, point of information for me. You need anything from me, uh, that says that all four parcels are included? You want, uh, something in writing or is it sufficient for me to just say it or?
Bethany?
Um, ideally, if you have to write in the lease agreement that you provided the town council, would be helpful.
Okay, we can provide the lease. No problem.
And yes, it would be helpful if you put, uh, that it would include parcel X, Y, and Z.
I apologize. I, you know, I just thought the whole site plan, um, you know, was covered by that. But, um, I will definitely, uh, itemize that for your, for your file.
Yeah, I think for clarity, um, it would be great if you could submit a amended cover sheet signed, uh, with the new parcels on it. That way it's very clear without having to dig into the file that that's all there. Because 10 years from now, you know?
Yep.
I can remember.
That can be done. Thank you. Thank you for that suggestion. Yep.
George, in 10 years, you will remember that.
I'm not going to be on this board.
But you will remember that 10 years from now. Sure.
I, I think, I think everything we discussed has to be on, on that permit. So like what George said, when somebody goes to look 10 years from now, they'll know, oh, this is the way it was, and that is the way it was. That's all. Everything else is fine. I think it's a great upgrade to the area.
I, I just would like to say.
Ramon Junior, Ramon Junior, will you smile once for me, please? There you go.
You know, uh, in, in a, with the climate in this country where we've lost, uh, a hundred and thirty thousand restaurants in our country during this pandemic, I, I think it's a real testament to my clients that they're excited about coming to East Long Meadow and investing in your community. And, uh, I, I don't think you'll be disappointed. I really don't.
Okay, welcome and best of luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister, Mister Clark, next item, please.
Okay, case, A and R, twenty twenty-one.
Hold on one, tied?
Yeah.
Point of border. Yes. I'm going to move that we take item six before item five.
Okay.
Because item six currently is part of the parcel that's, we're considering for a subdivision. And, uh, unless we endorse the A and R, that land actually would be part of the subdivision. So it would be important to do the A and R before we do the subdivision. I know it's only a preliminary approval, but just for clarity's sake, that that land is going to be excluded from the discussion.
Okay, uh, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I move that we move number six before number five.
So I have a second? Any discussion on that? Hearing none by roll call. Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torscha?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Sorry to interrupt you, Ty.
No, 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 it's all good.
You're going to do item six, please.
Okay, uh, case, A and R, twenty twenty-one dash O two, thirty-five dash forty-three, South Bend Lane. Request by applicant for endorsement of a plan, believe not to be required subdivision approval under subdivision control law to create two parcels. New lot one, thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twelve square feet. And new lot two, twenty-eight thousand, twenty-one square feet at thirty-five dash forty-three, South Bend Lane. Assessors parcel ID fifty-four dash six dash zero, located in residential A zoning district. The applicant is Marlene Goldstein, forty-three, South Bend Lane, East Long Meadow, Mass.
And so is the petitioner or the, or the petitioner's, uh, representative available?
Mr. Smith is coming in.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Michael Smith, presenting. Hello. How are you?
Good. So tell us about this.
Basically creating two frontage lots, uh, one for, uh, Marlene Goldstein's existing house, shown as lot one. Next floor, lot two, has an existing house on it, which is being raised. Both lots, uh, meet the frontage square footage requirement from a claim.
Questions for Mr. Smith?
I didn't understand what you said, Michael. The, the second one is the house is being raised?
No, the, lot two, the house is being raised. There's a note on the A and R plan.
Yeah.
This thing building is being raised.
And they're going to use the frontage for what?
Uh, it, I just said both lots have the, have frontage and square footage required in that zone.
Okay, that's, I didn't get that last part. Thanks.
Um, I'm trying to, which lot you're talking about when looking at the plan?
They're labeled as lot one and lot two.
I, I'm looking at a very small plan here, so it's kind of hard to find. Oh, I see lot one, tho- those, those two. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. What, um, maybe it will come up in the subdivision, but what about the large lot that is adjacent to Michelle Lane? to Michelle Lane? Is that, Michelle Street, is that going to be separated as an A and R or is that going to be part of the subdivision?
I believe that's going to be part of the overall subdivision, not part of this A and R.
Okay, thank you. I got confused on that.
Okay.
Sorry. Fine.
Any other questions for Mr. Smith? Hearing none. So this requires a motion to endorse plan? I learned from you, George. I learned from you.
Good.
So we have a motion to endorse?
She'll move.
I'm a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. So by roll call, Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Richards.
Okay, case SDSP 2021 dash one, preliminary subdivision plan for Happy Acre. Request by applicant for preliminary subdivision approval for a 23 lot subdivision on 50.43 plus or minus acre site located at South Bend Lane, Peace Road, assesses parcel ID 54 dash 6 dash 0 in residential A zoning district. The applicant is Marlene Goldstein, 43 South Bend Lane, East Long Meadow, Mass.
So Ty, is this a, did you say it was a public hearing?
Yes, this is one of the public hearings, number five.
All right. So I see Mr. Levesque. How are you?
Good, great, thank you.
Okay, I'll take it you're representing Mrs. Goldstein.
That is correct, sir.
Okay. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much. If it pleases the board, what I would like to do is share my screen.
Please do.
Ah, thank you.
Something to look at, that always helps. So good evening again. For the record, I'm Rob Levesque from our Levesque Associates. I'm working on this project in conjunction with a few other consultants. One is Mike Smith, who you just saw, who's doing the survey related work. Our office is doing the engineering and permitting. And Heather Comey has been doing the wetlands work out here. We are proposing, as you can see here, tonight, we have a preliminary subdivision. It consists of two streets located within the remaining land, at least off of South Bend Lane. There are a couple of different parcels that, but specifically, this project is taking place off of South Bend Lane. Lane, as you are aware, you just looked at the A and Rs, just to do a little bit of reference as to what you just endorsed or will be endorsing. This is Mrs. Goldstein's property right here. This is the A and R lot two. And this is A and R lot three. Our proposed subdivision would be accessed off of South Bend Lane. And this would be, we're calling it Happy Acres Lane, about 900 linear feet. And then we have Farmer Circle that would come to this point here. And then another little cul-de-sac called Morgan Way. We have, if we start kind of at this corner here, we have lots one through 23 within the subdivision. And in addition to that, obviously, these gray, or this tan area here is those A and R lots. So we'll be yielding the 23 plus two additional lots. And the property of Mrs. Goldstein will remain in her, you know, under her control.
May I ask a question here quickly?
Yeah, sorry.
You're creating an additional lot or parcel with the land along Michelle Street and to the rear of the property. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
So that's an additional lot?
That would be, that, so, and I can kind of talk about the, there's some preliminary plans for that, that might be subject to change prior to getting to the definitive stage, but I can speak to that if you'd like.
Please. I just want to recognize the fact that there is an additional parcel being created that you haven't talked about and that you don't show the entire parcel on the plan.
We do, not, yeah, I apologize. So we do show it, I believe, on the over, on the other sheets. But we have a map at the bottom of the plan. I can go through those other sheets. They're just hard to look at.
Yeah, I just want to make that point, that's all, because, and if not, it's a difficult parcel.
Yeah, yeah. If possible, Mr. Chairman, I feel like you have an echo. Is there a way to maybe have others mute and then, I mean, just hearing myself talk, it's a little weird.
Yes, so if you're not talking, if you could potentially, please mute your mic?
Oh, that's awesome, thank you. That's helpful. That'll help me keep my thoughts from going crazy. Okay, so as Mr. Kingston had mentioned, absolutely accurate, there is a, this green, there's these two different green, darker green colors, this here and then this color here. All of this area right now is being contemplated as open space. As part of our initial planning process, we did, we did meet with the neighborhood, at least to the extent that folks were available. Kind of, and we sent out, Mrs. Goldstein sent out information to, I would say, basically immediate abutters and folks that might be affected off of, you know, off of the surrounding streets, wanted them to know what was planned, why they were doing it, and what would and wouldn't be affected. So, long story short, this area here, I'm sorry, the darker green areas that you see on my plan, those are either bordering vegetated wetlands or other resource areas. So those are pretty much, you know, from a conservation standpoint, are generally off limits. Not to say you can't do work within them, but we, obviously, in this particular case and in general, try to avoid resource areas and avoid their buffer zones. So generally speaking, the proposed roadways within this subdivision can be executed and constructed, and the associated stormwater will likely, will all be out of resource areas. The stormwater area, because of the nature of that, will be closer to the wetland, at least as contemplated, which would be in this area down here. But generally speaking, the rest of the lots have all been carved off in such a manner that they, you know, arguably, most of them, except for maybe this lot number eight, are pretty much, there's a pretty solid footprint for folks to build within without going into the resource areas. And that was generally the goal, one of the goals of our, you know, planning process here. That said, there is also a perennial stream that runs in here that has a 200-foot riverfront area. This dashed, outer dashed line here is the 200-foot riverfront area. So we would expect folks to stay out of that. So I guess the good news for the folks that live over here, if they don't want to see immediate development or any development, you know, in their backyard, so to speak, and the nice thing is there is this existing resource area that will pretty much prevent any real work or development to be done or any activities within that area. Not to say something couldn't be proposed, but it would be very limited, as Mr. Kingston's well aware, in the riverfront area, there's very, very limited work that can be done. And we're expecting that no one would propose that as least for the single-family homes. That said, I just wanted to talk a little bit more to Mr. Kingston's question. So this land is, I don't want to call it leftover, but it's land that's really, you know, may not be overly usable for some folks, but some of it would potentially be. Nothing else for a buffer. So we've contemplated whether or not to, you know, if somebody was interested, potentially, there's been some discussions with folks over in this area, you know, off of this street here, or, you know, potentially other surrounding owners that might be interested in having a little bit more open space or green space, you know, maybe controlling that. Also, we believe that there will be folks that would like maybe a bigger lot that could certainly go in there. They wouldn't necessarily be able to develop that area. But initially, the thought process was to try to keep the general planning process where we were keeping the folks generally out of any resource areas. And we don't want people to think that they can just go willy-nilly into these areas if they were to buy the land. So we're working with Carl Perella, who is going to be the real estate broker on the project, and he's been intimately familiar with our planning process and will be communicating with landowners and potential lot buyers and builders about, you know, that process and, you know, how that may or may not go. But generally speaking, we are servicing with two roads and then a little very small cul-de-sac. We did contemplate coming through back out to South Bend Lane. We felt that it was better to reduce the impervious surface as part of our proposal. We could come back out through, right through here. So our proposal is basically to, you know, have this be a cul-de-sac rather than a loop. We'll still end up looping utilities through this area, but, you know, essentially, this made a lot more sense. One, it would, it wouldn't impact the neighbor as much, Mr., I think Serafino here. Also, wouldn't, you know, we'd be a little bit farther away from Summers Road, so we felt it was a better approach. Therefore, you can have the layout that you see before you. We have a determination on the wetland boundaries. We have submitted, obviously, the preliminary plan here. We have the property entirely surveyed. And, you know, with your, with a potential approval of the preliminary and the associated waivers, we would be looking to go to definitive and submitting sometime, you know, later, later in the spring, early summer. So with that, I probably have a lot of questions, so I'd be happy through the chair to answer any questions you may have or anything else I can do for you.
Yeah, so Pete, hold on. If you could just, if you could just leave the map up or this, that would, that would be helpful. Okay, Pete, go ahead.
Where is the area that is not shown that may have proposed houses in it that George is talking about?
To clarify, there are no other areas we're anticipating houses being developed. So this shows the entire area we anticipate housing, houses being developed, but I will, I'll have to change plans here just for a moment, sir. Give me one second. It's going to be a little bit tricky because they, we have all these match lines and the orientation is a little bit different to get them onto the sheets. Let me see if I can get you the correct sheet.
I believe you mentioned Shaw Street. Did you mention that, George?
Michelle Street.
Yeah, Michelle, yes. I was going to say, I don't know where Shaw Street is. Okay.
Maybe this will help. I had this, can you, oh, hold on. I think I have to share a different screen. Bear with me just one moment. Are you looking at the Google Earth aerial? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Yeah?
Yes, we are.
Okay, great. Okay, so this, this kind of gives an overview of the property. So, so this is Mrs. Goldstein's property, her house right here. Okay? And then here is Michelle Street. And this is, so, what is this one? South Meadow, yeah, South Meadow Road here. And then we have an old right-of-way, Ronald Road, and then Betswood. Betswood. And then Summers Road. So the question was related to the areas to be developed. So essentially, you know, we're, we're going to be able to develop based on the wetlands and other resource areas in here, but there was, there's, there's a, as you can see, you can kind of see the wetland system that runs through here and continues on, and that stream continues on along, right along this corridor. So that area is pretty much off limits. There is the possibility, according to Heather Comey from Wetland Consultants, Inc., there is the potential possibility to do a single-family home here because there is a previous home down in this general vicinity that, but that would be subject to the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission and is not, not a given by any means. It would certainly require the filing of notice of intent and may or may not be allowed. So I think that, I think that kind of covers what could be done in this general vicinity, so maybe one house down here. But other than that, the area is pretty much riddled with wetland and, you know, reviled area.
The existing right-of-way or driveway to that old house is still there also, off of Peace Road, right down to Page's house, where you just were talking about, the driveway still exists there.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Right where we are, yeah, right around there, yeah, yeah.
I think there's a...
I just live up the road from there.
Okay, got you.
So Mr. Levesque, maybe you know, or Mr. Kingston, he showed South Meadow Road, can you, right there? So was that developed as a subdivision?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And do you know when?
I don't have the vintage. I would, houses are fairly new.
Somewhere in the 80s, I would say 82 or so.
Okay, thank you. Do other members of the board have questions of Mr. Levesque?
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
George?
You're showing South Bend Lane on your plans as a through street. It is not a through street. Are you planning on making it a through street?
No, and just to clarify, I apologize for the, I think it's a graphic question, so, and I think Bethany had brought that up. So the, this, the way that the right-of-ways are shown, this is the, this is actually, so this would be the street line of the street, so this is the right-of-way. So that's off of Mr. Smith's survey. So the actual edge of pavement would be within this, same thing on our subdivision here. The edge of pavement is inside this. I'm just kind of showing you the overall lot layout plan. So no, there is absolutely no proposal to go, nor do we control any of this land down here. This is obviously either town right-of-way or state right-of-way. So, so just to clarify for anybody in the audience that has any question, the proposal would be to have a curb cut onto South Bend Lane and then all traffic would end up going to the left to Summers Road.
Okay, there's already a curb cut there for what's currently called Ronald Road. And I don't know if you're going to follow the, that line for your Happy Acres Lane, but the reason I ask the question is that you're asking for a variance for a 900-foot cul-de-sac. But with South Bend Lane being, not being a through street, your actual length of the cul-de-sac is significantly longer than that because it would include the length of South Bend Lane. Can you comment on that?
Yep, so I think depending on how it's interpreted, I think you're, you know, the statement is arguably correct in that, you know, the way, you know, you know, we're proposing cul-de-sacs that are approximately 900 linear feet. But obviously, you know, if you end up measuring from here, depending on, you know, we've looked at a few that have been done over the years and it, we seem like we were consistent with what had been done, but I would agree that, yes, you know, you could, one could argue that, you know, this is, this is a dead-end street and these are dead-end streets. So, you know, in the end, from a practical standpoint, you know, the new, you know, there's, there's, I guess there's dead-end streets all over East Long Meadow. We run into this quite a bit, you know, what, where do you measure from? Do you measure from the new street, I would argue? In that, in that case, we would be, you know, we'd be, you know, this is about nine and this is about 300, so I can confirm the distance, but yeah, understand.
The reason I bring it up is, the reason for that requirement that we not exceed a certain length is for public safety reasons, particularly for the fire department. How long, if there's a blockage, how far back can they, how far can they get in without the trucks? And so it needs to be made clear, at least to the fire department, of what the length will be to a through road, okay? And in your definitive, I would, I would hope you would address that.
Absolutely, I would agree. And then also, just as a, you know, through the chair, as a potential, as necessary or if there is an issue really, I don't think there was a comment related to that from the fire department, but if, if, you know, certainly at the definitive level, if need be, we will have an easement here. This could be made to accommodate emergency vehicles in the event that the, that the fire department had a concern. You know, given the topography and given the lack of any stream crossings for the roadways and given the lack of mature, at least currently, mature vegetation, I would probably be quite some time before any particular, I guess unless a telephone pole or a light pole, which I guess, I think the utilities are going to be underground, so it'd have to be a light pole. You know, it'd be a long time before they would have a public safety issue in terms of access. But if need be, we certainly have thought about it and we would, you know, if, if, if they felt the need, we could, we could let them through here as an alternative, maybe with some knock-down bollards or whatever was deemed appropriate by the planning board.
The other question I have, I've already surfaced with you, and that regards lot 17, okay, which includes the quarries. Those are part of lot 17, is that correct?
Yeah, so that, I believe that to be correct. Yes, so, I believe that to be correct. I don't have a history on the quarries. I have heard at least second and potentially third-hand regarding them. But, yes, my understanding is they exist within this bordering vegetated wetland.
And I have information that they have been used to dump trash and construction debris within the last 20 years. I'm not going to comment on whether that's legal or not because I'm not in a position to do so. I don't know what has actually been put in there. I'm not a licensed site professional and I haven't surveyed the area. But, I have good information that stuff has been dumped back there. And I would be very concerned if that area is not assessed by a licensed site professional to assure us that there isn't anything back there that shouldn't be there.
Yeah, and I could speak to that a little bit. So, yes, that would be the appropriate professional. I do tend to agree. Certainly, as part of any conveyance, you know, any disclosures that need to be made. You know, so, for example, with Lot 17, should that not be retained by the owner? You know, if there was activity. And I have heard similar testimony, parole evidence. You know, bottom line is, that would be a licensed site professional that would look at that, also potentially environmental consultant. I'm not sure what it was, I had heard that potentially it was DPW. I don't know anything about that years ago and it sounds like it was a long time ago. I don't know if it was 20 or 30 years ago. But, I think it's fair to say that it warrants a look. I have communicated with my client about that and they have a little bit of, you know, they have stories as well. So, I will continue to pursue that. Prior to the definitive, I would look to have a better answer for you as I am not the, you know, in my company is not the, we don't employ licensed site professionals in our office. I can speak to a little bit about, I think you also had a question, Mr. Kingston, about kind of the existing house and some of the debris around the house. That is being cleaned up. I don't know if it started yet because I haven't been over there since we've had our discussion with the owner. But, I do believe that Associated Building Records, WRE, out of Springfield, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, out of Springfield, has been hired, I guess that's the Merkin family, they've been hired to properly demolish the structures on-site that need to be demolished. As Mike had mentioned on Lot 3, the houses are, Lot 2 and 3, I believe, there's houses to be raised and a barn. There's also a silo. So, they're going through the proper channels. They typically would have a, they're required by the state to do a pre-demolition survey and obviously, anything around the property. I think the licensed site professional would also, if they're going to be making any statements about whether the property is clean or would deem it to have a required further investigation, that would be in their report for not only anything that happened over in the quarry area, but also around the barn as well. So, I would expect to have at least some sort of information from a licensed site professional prior to the definitive. Just, you know, and I understand it's a different lane, but I do understand the logical question and you want to make sure that folks aren't adopting a problem and that, you know, everything's been addressed accordingly.
Sure. I mean, it's been farmed for over 100 years, maybe 200 years. Stuff happens, okay? But, converting a farm to residential, we need to be super careful that people buying houses, putting up big houses, know what's underground. That's all I'm saying.
Yep. Yeah, I relate that concern to Mrs. Goldstein and the family. And, you know, we're working closely with them and Mr. Perella on this. And Mr. Perella, broker, will obviously be cognizant of this as well.
All right. George, you all set?
I'm all set.
Anyone else there on the board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have comments from the police department. Do you want me to read it into the record?
Please.
Okay. This is a letter dated March 16, 2021 to the planning board from Michael Keller Sola, our safety officer, and the police chief, Mark Williams, was copied on it. And it says here, Dear East Long Meadow Planning Board Members, I have reviewed the proposal for the following case SD-P 2021-1, Preliminary Subdivision Plan for Happy Acres. The East Long Meadow Police Department has concerns regarding traffic congestion on Summers Road. The police department anticipates heavier traffic flow on South Bend Lane. There exist potential safety concerns regarding vehicles entering and exit South Bend Lane, specifically vehicles attempting to turn left onto Summers Road. South Bend Lane is positioned across from Hamden Road with Summers Road in between the two roads. Vehicles attempting to take a right-hand turn onto Summers Road from Hamden Road may pose safety concerns. Vehicles traveling south on Summers Road attempting to go around the vehicle, taking a right-hand turn on Hamden Road may pose possible safety issues respectfully, and signed by the safety officer.
Do you have other comments from any other departments? I know this is a preliminary plan, but I didn't know if anyone else had sent in something. Todd?
That's all I see.
And the police gave no recommendations on how to alleviate those?
No, they just say that they have concerns.
Okay. All right. Other members of the board, before we open it to the public for their comments? Hearing none. So, what I'd like to suggest when we open this to the public? So, there is a raise hand on the bottom of your screen. If you could raise your hand, if you wish to make a comment to the board about the plan, please hit the raise hand and the administrator of the meeting will call people in one by one. So, the first person who wishes to raise their hand, please hit that button and you can be brought into the meeting. And Mr. Leveque, would you just please leave this up on the screen? I think it's easier for people to see it.
So, Russ, Mr. Kuzelis is in.
Okay. Welcome to the meeting. The floor is yours. Mr. Kuzelis?
Are you muted, Bill? Yes. There you go.
Hey, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Sorry about that. Can you better define what that 100-foot buffer is? Like, for example, on Lot 12, it seems the 100-foot buffer seems to like cut that lot in half. What exactly, what does that buffer mean?
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay. Good, yeah, it's a great question. So, the 100-foot buffer is a regulatory upland review area. So, it's not actually a wetland resource, but it's an upland review area that's measured horizontally 100 feet from the edge of a bordering vegetated wetland or other, you know, intermittent stream, et cetera. In this particular case, I believe if you're talking about Lot 12, the actual wetland area is the green. The edge of the wetland is those little triangles that you see there. Those are the wetland flags that we put out in the field and we locate, or Mr. Smith located. And then, measured horizontally 100 feet from that is an area that's subject to jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission under the state regs, the Wetlands Protection Act, also in the, subject to review if the town has a bylaw. I'm trying to remember, Mr. Kingston will remember, but I think you guys have a bylaw or maybe not. I can't remember. But regardless, it's regulated. And then, it's not to say that someone couldn't, if they bought Lot 12, not to say they couldn't go into that area. But, they would be regulated and they would have to prove why they needed to go into it. And, you know, it's pretty common for folks to be able to clear within, you know, maybe 25, I'm sorry, 25 to 50 feet of the wetlands if they can meet the performance standards. But, they can't impact the wetlands without real good reason and arguably have to stay out of the buffer zone. I hope that...
So, in terms of construction within that buffer zone, it's less likely that they could be, they could clear it and maybe put a lawn in or something like that, maybe, but not actually put a building, like a garage or something like that back there?
Yeah, I think that's a fair, generally a fair statement. I think there's nothing restricting them from maybe putting a garage or a barn or a house within the buffer zone specific to a structure. It's based on activity and it's based on the proximity of that activity and the potential for that activity to be near the wetland and also potentially affect the wetland, either by erosion or, you know, impervious surfaces that generate more stormwater. So, I think as we look at the plan, you know, just to give you some perspective, there are a few lots here along this edge that have that buffer zone. So, on Lot 9, I would think that they would want to clear, you know, a decent amount. But, generally speaking, anything that any of these lots do within the buffer zone would have to file. So, like, if I look at 4, I think you could get a house in without going into the buffer zone. 5, you might need to go in a little bit, but not too bad. 6, definitely could stay out. 7 could stay out. 8 and 9, you might want to clear a little bit. So, they would, each of these lots, whoever buys them, would have to file a notice of intent for that work within the buffer zone. That would be a filing with the Conservation Commission. And they would issue, if they felt that it met the performance standards, they could issue what's called an order of conditions. That would be the permit. Those permits are good for three years, as long as they take care of that work within three years.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next individual who would like to be brought into the meeting? So, Don, yeah, Don, you know, just bring them in because I can't see because this...
No, that's all right. It takes me a minute anyway, Russ.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Hello?
Hi. Can you, can you just let us know who you are?
Yes, my name is Suzanne LaRocque. I live on Maple Shade Ave.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Leveque, I have a question. Could you describe a little bit more about the area off of Pease Road that had a previous home on it?
Sorry, I was muted. Let's see if I can get back to the Google Earth. Can you folks see Google Earth right now?
Yes.
Okay. So, I believe you were talking about an area right about in here?
Yes.
So, do you mean from a what could be done standpoint there or?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
Okay. So, it's not, so, and I don't want to get too far afield, but through the, with the, with the...
Yes.
Permission.
Yeah.
Okay, so, it's not currently proposed as part of the subdivision, but if someone wanted to develop a home site there, there's the required amount of frontage and area to do so from a zoning standpoint. And from a zoning standpoint, a single-family home would be allowed there, okay? But, from a conservation standpoint, there's a higher bar. Because there's wetland resource areas there, because there's a perennial stream and because there is potentially even flood plain there, to build a home would be highly regulated. I'm not saying it can't be done, but it would be highly regulated and they would have to file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. And they would probably be limited to a very small area for the home if they did in fact get it approved.
Okay, so, is that a flood area? Is that why?
There are flood plain areas. I'm not sure the specifics on this particular location. I would have to confirm that for you. I apologize. But, there's nothing currently proposed there. And if the Goldsteins or someone else that were trying to, would try to develop that, they would certainly have to adhere to any of the bordering lands subject to flooding regulations under the Wetlands Protection Act. That's the 100-year flood plain section.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I believe that that home is more to the west. See where the car is on the overhead? Go a little bit, go just, it's in there. That's where it is, I believe. It's on the west side of that pond.
I got this correctly. That will let us go back in time.
Yeah.
Some of them, some of them might be a little bit easier to see.
All right, next individual?
Mr. Stockenbrooke, you're all set? Unmute.
Okay.
Yeah, I just have a, we are on South Meadow Road.
Yes.
We butt Lot 13 in the diagram. I just want to know, between our lot line and that dash-like line of that lot, yeah, of 14, we butt, yeah, no, 13. What is that, how big is that space between, yeah, right where the magnifying is back to our lot? How big is that? What's the width? Approximately, if you know.
I'm racking my brain. The rear, so that line represents the rear setback.
Yeah.
I don't want to speak out of school, but I want to say it's probably 40 feet. I think the front setback is 30. I think the side was 15 and I think the rear is 40. But, maybe if Mike, I don't know if Mike Smith's online, maybe he can check that for me because I don't want to speak wrong. But, I believe it's, I believe it's at least...
So, they couldn't clear past that?
Oh, no, that's not true.
Okay.
Yeah, so, the good question. So, that line, these lines represent the building, there's a couple of different lines we have. But, the building setback is what we're showing there, that dash line. So, technically, if they're out of the 100-foot buffer zone, okay? Say somebody buys Lot 13 and they're out of the 100-foot buffer zone. So, they're in this area over here and they want to clear to the property line?
Yeah.
Not, I'm not aware of any restrictions that would prevent them from doing so. I would hope they wouldn't. I would hope that, you know, they would leave a buffer, but leave, you know, I believe either property owner could clear to the property line should they want to, as long as they're out of the buffer zone.
Yeah. Okay.
Is there currently any greenery there now?
Yes, there's like, yeah, woods and stuff, yes.
Okay, good, all right. On your property, Mr. Stockenbrooke?
No, we have, there's an old wall, stone wall back there and on the other side is a lot of growth, trees and bushes and grass and stuff, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
I was interested in what that space was, how big that, and it's not a space, so.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard on this item?
No other hands, Russ.
Okay. If there's no other hands, I would make, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Board members?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion made and second, you want to unmute your, and can you, can you maybe remove the schematic? Thank you. Now I can see people. So, the motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion on that? So, hearing none. By roll call, Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
So, I would like to just maybe ask a couple of questions if I could, Mr. Leveque. So, when you're coming out of South Bend, what's the distance between South Bend and Pease?
Let me see here.
And then, correspondently, what's the difference between South Bend and Michelle?
So, from here, South Bend, all the way to Pease?
Yeah.
Let me see what I can do for you here. You're gonna have, this is based on Google, so...
Yeah, okay.
2,500 feet?
So, in distance, what is that? Quarter of a mile?
Almost a half mile.
Okay. And Michelle would then be probably half of that?
Clear that one.
You got 2,500, I got 1,400.
Let me, let me make sure I'm doing this right, sir. Sorry, I think I am. So, let me get... I don't know how my Google skills are, but...
I guess the other point is, are there any traffic counts, proposed traffic counts for the subdivision?
Yeah, so, generally speaking, you know, so, yeah, good question. Let me get you that other distance for you too. So, to Michelle, do you want as the crow flies or on the street?
On the street would be best if you could do it.
Okay, let me, I don't know why, it's holding one second. Of course, it's not cooperating. I'm just going to give you this for now and then I'll fix it. So, that's about 600 feet. Get out of this thing. So, yeah, so that's a good question. So, we work, typically, we work with McMahon Associates out of, they have an office in Westfield. They're a large traffic firm. So, what we've seen with these subdivisions is that they generally generate typically a little... the ITE manual that they use for traffic counts, it's, what I've seen is they generally generate a little under 10 vehicle trips per day. And they typically break that out to the morning peak hour and afternoon peak hour. We just had a 50-lot subdivision in Ludlow that got approved the other night. And that it did not affect the level of service at the surrounding intersections. So I understand the question from the police department. We certainly want to make sure that they're comfortable. So I would expect prior to the coming back with the definitive, we would be looking to provide some information to the police department to quell their fears or, or address their, or mitigate any, any issues that we do find. But pretty straight, pretty straightforward to get a trip generation analysis on something like this, which we would be happy to do. And then also typically we'll look at the site distance. As you can imagine, that section of Summers Road is pretty, pretty straight. But we would, we would look at, you know, those movements. We also look, they typically will look at whether this is a crash cul, uh, cluster, they call it. You know, if there, you know, history of crashes at the intersection, that's something that you'd want to look at too. So we can, we can make sure we provide that because I think it's just good in general for the planning board to have, to hang their hat on. And I think the police department comment, they're looking for that as well.
All right, that was my question. Any other members of the board have questions or concerns that you want to raise that you would like to see the petitioner address on their definitive plan?
I think I've raised all of my concerns.
I raised my traffic concern, yep.
Okay.
I, I, I do note that the developer has asked for a waiver of a traffic study. I think that in light of what the police department has commented on, that, that's something that we should be very careful about doing.
I, George, that there, there should be some sort of a traffic study. I mean, you've got 23 lots and you've got basically a, you're going to have a place where there should probably be a stoplight because of the amount of traffic at the going to work and coming home from work times. No, I'm not saying there should be, but, but you're going to have a lot of traffic coming out of South Bend. And there's, there's been some really pretty bad accidents there.
That's why my, my comment is that I, I think we, we probably, my, I would be loathe to waive the traffic study. I would not like to do that.
We understand that and we, through the chair, we'll, we'll waive that request.
Okay. So Bethany, I, I hope you're there. I can't see you with the diagram up still, but do we vote on each waiver at this time?
Yes.
Okay, so can you just by, by, by the way they're listed, can you raise each one for us, please?
Sure. Um, first one I have is 5.3.12 definitive plan requirements, specifically names of the butters.
Okay. So if we, so if we waive it, Bethany?
I don't understand why that we would waive that, why that would want to be waived.
Mr. Levesque?
To be honest with you guys, I was talking to my staff this, this afternoon in preparation. I don't think we need that. They are on the, they are on the plan. So, you know, I don't know why, I don't know why that was on there.
So you've, so you're asking that, that be withdrawn?
Thank you, yes.
So item two, for the installation of sidewalks on one side of the street within the subdivision and cul-de-sac. So I hope you understand that a number of years ago, the planning board voted that we could waive the requirement for the sidewalks, but that there be a corresponding payment to the town's sidewalk fund in lieu of that.
Understood.
So your, your client is willing to do that?
Yeah, I think before the definitive, I think we'll look at the cost benefit analysis of that. But sometimes, believe it or not, I've seen that they can put the sidewalks in cheaper. Oftentimes, the town will apply a fee based on, on the town doing it, which would be prevailing wage. So we'll look at that, but for now, we would like to request that waiver. And obviously, if we do get that waiver granted, we would certainly be required to, to supply the, the fee to the sidewalk fund.
And could you clarify, the waiver is, you're asking for is to have no sidewalks?
No, sir. I would be to allow sidewalks on one side only.
On one side only, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
A discussion from the board?
Personally, I, I would be available to that.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive Section 7.2.5 to have only, to have sidewalks on only one side of the street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, so, so those in favor by roll call, Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torscha?
Nay.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And I'm, I'm a aye as well, so that, that goes. Uh, the next item, Bethany, do you want to just read it into the record, please?
Sure, 7.3.4.3 F1 Design Standards Fencing. The request is for the fence not to be required for around the stormwater basin and just for the planning board's information in the subdivision rules and regs. It reads the fencing may be required by the planning board for all detention basins exceeding two and a half feet maximum depth.
Mr. Levesque, do you want to speak to this?
Uh, sure. Typically, we design the interior of our stormwater basins with a four-to-one slope so that if, you know, a child or an animal get in, gets in, even during frozen ground conditions, it's pretty reasonable to get out. Should the planning board feel that this is necessary? This is not a, a showstopper for us. But typically, we can keep it nicer and keep it, we're not, we're not planning aggressive slopes. But I guess, you know, if the planning board, you know, I think it's probably appropriate that we, we would reapply for this, for this waiver at the definitive stage. And then you'd have a better chance to see exactly what our grades are going to look like. So for the purposes of what we're doing tonight, if you really felt the need for a fence, it wouldn't be the end of the world. But we think it's a little nicer without them.
Uh, comments from the board?
Uh, George here, I, I would not like to waive this until I see the design of the basin.
Is that in the form of a motion that we, could we deny it now? And then they can reapply for it at the definitive stage?
Well, I, I would like to give them the chance to withdraw this request now and then request it again at the definitive stage if they feel it's appropriate.
Happy to do so through the chair. We respectfully request this, this waiver request to be omitted from the current.
Item four.
Uh, Section 6.2.6, this is for the maximum length of the cul-de-sac of 900 feet. And from the subdivision rules and regulations, cul-de-sac streets shall not be longer than 900 feet unless, in the opinion of the planning board, greater length is deemed necessary by virtue of topography or other circumstances. Cul-de-sac streets will not be permitted by the board if in its opinion proper safety with regard to vehicular traffic cannot be afforded by the construction of a cul-de-sac street.
So this is Russ speaking. So given George's comments earlier about the concerns for the fire department and Mr. Levesque's notation that there could be an easement to allow additional access to the property, perhaps you might want to withdraw that until we hear from the fire department?
Yeah, can I speak, Mr. Chair?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. I, that one's probably more of a design-related issue. We don't, well, what I don't want to do is, I don't want my client to go forward with our definitive design without, and without, without having that waiver if possible. I think, I don't know if the waiver could be, could be approved subject to, you know, I didn't see any, I did, I, I think we did get comments from the fire department. I don't remember, Bethany, do you know if we got, did we get comments from the fire department?
Uh, yes, let me see here. Their concern was that the cul-de-sac is at least a 42-turn radius and that all hydrants are within 500 feet or less of each other.
So I, so we do have the, the radius on the cul-de-sac. Didn't sound like to me like they had any question on the length. And we would certainly be able to provide that easement as needed. So if it was possible, we would respectfully request that waiver. That'll allow us to move forward knowing that generally the planning board's okay with it. I didn't see anything from the fire department or the police department on the length.
Comments from the board? Hearing none, do I hear a motion? One way or the other?
So you want a motion to accept-
Approve.
Request on, on number four-
Yes.
To rule, to waive that?
Yes.
I don't know if it's my, I don't, if I have the response.
So as George taught me, we, we need at least an affirmative motion. It can such, it can subsequently be voted down, but we need an affirmative motion. So someone willing to make that affirmative motion?
Not me.
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver up to 1,000 feet.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
That, that's-
Go ahead, Pete.
It's just an arbitrary figure. What is the actual length from South Bend Lane all the way down to the end of the, the first, the first cul-de-sac?
Well, from, from, the way I looked at it, from the, from South Bend Lane to the end of the furthest cul-de-sac is like 921 feet or something like that.
Okay, all right.
Huge, okay.
Okay, George, thank you.
Mr. Levesque?
Uh, I don't believe that's accurate. So I at least, I can share my screen if it's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Let me stop sharing this. Uh, can you guys see the plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is South Bend Lane down here. Uh, these, these are station points along the center, so there's 300 feet to here. So let's call this 350 feet to the center line of this cul-de-sac here. And then starting again, we are about 900 feet to the end there. So it's nine, so we're talking about 1,200 linear feet from, from South Bend Lane. Are we counting South Bend Lane as part of that length at this point?
Uh, no.
Okay, so I think it would be, I think the, the figure would be 1,200, uh, but just to be conservative, maybe 1,225 linear feet, just in case that would give us a little wiggle room.
I'd modify the motion to say 1,300 feet.
Thank you, sir.
Do I have a second on the amendment?
I'll, I'll go with George's experience and I'll, I'll second that amendment or that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, so by roll call, Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torscha?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Okay, back to you, Bethany. Or Rob, could you put that back one up? Yeah, thank you. So item five?
I think it's listed as one. Again, it's kind of a funny form, I think, yeah.
It's 4.3.8 and 6.1.3, protection of natural features. In the subdivision rules and regs, it reads all natural features such as large trees greater than 18 inches shall be preserved.
Talk to me, Mr. Levesque.
I'm trying to find out where we are.
Uh, scroll down.
Page at the top.
There you go.
Okay, thank you, yep. Uh, thank you, sorry about that. Um, yeah, so the, the, so what happens with these subdivisions? And actually, this was one I had in Ludlow the other night. So they require, they require us to locate trees 18 inches in diameter or greater. So most of this is, as you can imagine, secondary successional species because of the farm. So there's probably not a lot of that. But the areas that we're proposing to clear are the, for the roadway and for the, the lot, the, the home sites themselves. Any other areas would be controlled by the lot owners. So we don't anticipate that we'll have any of these, but there may be the rare tree that happens to be within the limit of work. And if that's the case, we don't have the ability because of the requirements of subdivision control law, we don't really have the, the opportunity to go right around a tree or, or, you know, make really tight radii and stuff. So it kind of becomes a moot point with the roadway construction and the general grading for the road and, and obviously for the homes because we can't put homes on trees. And then the rest of the lots, even if we were to locate those trees, say we wanted to locate and protect an 18-inch tree that was on one of these lots, the landowner that ends up buying that lot or the builder that develops that lot could go and wipe out the whole lot, not the whole lot, but if it's out of the buffer zone, arguably if it's upland, they could clear that lot. So it ends up being an effort that, in my opinion, is wasted and doesn't, doesn't provide any protections for these. There's really no protections built in other than maybe for the roadway, which obviously, you know, we're basing the entire subdivision in the design based on the subdivision standards with centerline radii, roadway grades, cul-de-sac size, lot sizes. So it ends up being kind of a, it's a funny one. We see it a lot and I would say it's, I, I've never seen it not waived, but it's, it's one of those weird ones.
Uh, board questions and discussion?
Just had a quick question. So we don't expect, I mean, looking at the map, we don't expect a lot of trees to be affected under this by, by possibly waiving this?
No.
I mean, looking at the, the aerial photography, it's mostly open field.
Right.
Um, I, I, I don't see any reason to not waive it.
I walked, I walked the lot, yep. All right, do I have a motion to waive?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torscha?
Yes.
And I, I'm a yes as well. So maybe just to move things along a little bit. So Bethany, could you read two, three and four and we'll just discuss them all together, please?
Sure, so these are sections from the zoning bylaw under the site plan review. And this is because the building commissioner had checked off the site plan review on the zoning determination form. So these are sections 7.424, Section 7.425, and Section 7.426.
So if we were to waive them, the effect would be?
Uh, let me see. It has to do with the content of the site plan. Waiver of location and use of all existing and proposed buildings and structures within the site plan. Waiver of location of parking areas, driveways, sidewalks, ramps, buffers, screening, for screening, paths, landscaping, light fixtures, planting areas, walls, et cetera, and waiver for the present and proposed utility systems. And Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, at least for the 7.425, that's because you don't have the footprints for the houses yet?
Yeah, so through the chair. Yeah, so we, we ran into this with Mr. Carabatta subdivision. And so there is a requirement and, and, and Mr., Mr. Duquette is absolutely right that a site plan would be required. And we're not necessarily requiring, requesting a waiver from the site plan. I think what happens is because the zoning determination checks off everything that will be required, it, it gets a little bit out of order. So to, we would, the site plan, in my opinion, is not required until the subdivision is approved. After which time, if someone goes to build a lot, my understanding is that there is a site plan required so that they can make sure, you know, the grading doesn't go onto the neighbor's lot. They can, you know, the building inspector can look at that. So that, that's typically the order it would be done in. Obviously, under subdivision control law, I don't know that it necessarily applies. I do agree with Bethany, it just makes sense to get a waiver for now on this just to keep it clean so that there's no question. But obviously, in the future, I still think you wouldn't be waiving that requirement for the building department. That is still, I believe, a requirement for the building department that will want to see a site plan prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Discussion from the board? Questions from the board?
Obviously, you're going to show the sidewalks, okay? And the utility systems. So I don't understand why you're asking- So I don't, I don't understand why you're asking for the fourth one here. You, you are gonna show us on your definitive, your proposed utility systems, right? You're gonna show us where you're putting your utilities.
Yes, for the, yes, sir, for the, for the road, and then obviously services to the houses. Uh, but I believe this, if you look closely at the zoning bylaw, so you see how it's the zoning bylaw? Um, it's not necessarily the subdivision section. It's not, this isn't a waiver of the subdivision section. So technically, I don't think a waiver necessarily needs to be granted for the zoning bylaw under subdivision control law. But we, we threw them in, we threw the kitchen sink, kind of a belt and suspenders approach, based on our discussion with Bethany.
Okay, board, what's the board's pleasure?
I'll, I'll move to waive these three sections of the bylaw with the understanding that they do not waive the requirements of the subdivision regulations.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, John. Discussion?
I'm sorry, I had my mic off. I said, I don't even know why we're voting on it when it's gonna be looked at under more, you know, more scrutiny with the, the final, the final project plan. I don't, I don't get it.
Well, then if we waive it, we don't need to look at it.
What's that?
So if we waive it, we don't need to be looking at that further.
It.
Right?
I guess.
That's my understanding. George?
Yeah, I, again, as I'm saying, we still have to meet all the requirements of the subdivision regulations, which would include showing the sidewalks and the subdivision utility systems. We're not waiving that provision. We're just waiving having to do the, that under the bylaw.
So we have a motion that's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none. So by roll call, could you, would you remove that screen, please? So we could, thank you. So, Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
It seems unnecessary to me, but aye.
Mr. Torscha?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Alright, any, any other matters related to this that we need a vote on, Bethany?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. But I think we need approval of the preliminary plan with the waivers, yeah. So do I have a motion? George, you're muted, George.
So moved.
Well.
Seconded.
Okay. So, any discussion? So.
I'll just, I'll just be interested to hear what the police have to say in their definitive comments.
Yep, yep. And I'd like to see the traffic counts. So I've been, a motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? So on the approval of preliminary plan, hearing none. Mr. Torscha?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Richards? You are muted, tied. Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you, Mr. Levek.
How did that happen?
Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate your time.
Next item, Mr. Park?
Uh, we have our director's report.
Bethany?
I'm sure. So, update for the next meeting. We will have a handful of site plan waivers, at least two special permits, and a zoning amendment. That's the language discussed by our bylaw committee about the kennel licensing. It's one sentence regarding under the special permit section that will just require all, require all licenses, town and local and state licenses be required by the applicant.
Prior to approval by the planning board?
Right, so that's a criteria of the special permit approval.
Okay.
Um, so that will be on the agenda. We did get DLT funding from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for our housing production plan. So that will be underway within the year. And we also are getting moving on that local rapid recovery plan for that section of North Main Street. Um, that begins with a survey that is, was produced by the state, which we will be distributing to the business owners on that section of the study area.
Okay. Alright, hearing no other business. Thank you all for your, your attention to all the matters that were there on the agenda. So I would like to have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torscha?
Yes.
Punderson?
Aye, time for dinner.
I'm a yes, and last but not least, Mr. Richards? You're muted. You're muted.
What happened? Again? I'm not muting it.
Alright, but I'm sure you, your vote is yes, correct?
My vote is yes. For some reason, apparently, you guys don't want to hear from me anymore.